I'd like to call to order the Monday, August 2nd, 2010, meeting of the Currituck County Board of Commissioners to Order. This evening, we're blessed to have Mr. Walter Gallup, who is a retired military chaplain, and also very active in the interfaith, community outreach organization. And if you would lead us in invocation and a pledge of allegiance, we'd sure appreciate it. Everyone, please stand.
Thank you. Shall we do the pledge first?
However you want to do it.
Okay. I, first of all, offer a prayer for the citizens of our community, our leaders, and a challenge to, and inspiration for our nation. So let us pray. God of our fathers, you have made our lot to fall in this fair land. Guide us, we pray, come before you with a prayer for our commissioners, our officers, our appointed officials, and all those who share in the ordering of our community life. Give strength, honor, and charity to all our fellow citizens, that they may do their work, seeking not the good over any party or any faction, but of respect for all of our citizens. By your strength, oh Father, our fathers and our mothers have made us free citizens. For your law and love of country, they gave their lives. Oh God, give us wisdom and strength to save our land from greed and corruption, from pride and arrogance. Protect us from tyrants and misrule. Give to our leaders wisdom, and to our people patience, that together, we may achieve a better law, a purer life, and more abundant opportunity for all. And our passion, oh God, sometimes we make mistakes. We are confronted every day with conflicting opinions and strong appeals to our emotion. Help us to separate the half-truths, the fears, the false accusations, from the truth that can make us free. Make this our republic, a peacemaker and hope to the world. Give us a share of her upbuilding and her defense, and jealously care for our citizens among all our nation, that in liberty and self-restraint, and in charity and in strength, and in gentleness, this old ship of state may forever be worthy of her origins and her destiny. May God help us. Amen.
Amen.
Let us pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gallup. First item on the agenda is the approval of agenda. We have two changes, modifications, we need to make. Number one is to add a closed session pursuant to Section 143-318.11a3, consult with the county attorney in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege. And then, immediately after that closed session, we're going to take the authorization to acquire easement through eminent domain and place that under that after the closed session.
So move.
The motion.
Second.
Second. All those in favor signify if I say an aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Public comment. I don't think Ms. Keane has anybody that's signed up. Is there anyone that was not afforded the opportunity to sign up that wishes to speak tonight? That's not on an agenda item? I believe, any commissioners have anything? Mr. Scanlon had something briefly. He wanted to, do you want to say something? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to give the video a chance to key up. There's an article in one of our local newspapers today about 911 service and how long it's actually been in our community. The chair and I have also been talking about trying to take better advantage of our video capabilities. So I did want to, our staff has put together, it's about a three-minute public service announcement, that I wanted to share with you to show some of the capabilities we have and some of the skills of our staff, as well as to give them some recognition of the hard work they do. So if Deb can go ahead and key up that public service announcement, please.
Currituck 911.
Currituck 911.
When emergencies strike, it can strike anywhere, at home, at work, and even out around town when you're away from your phone. It's important to know how to properly call 911 from a cellphone in case an emergency occurs in an area where no landlines are available.
Currituck 911, what is the address for the emergency? Okay, what's the matter, Katie? What's the emergency?
I need cops and ambulance. My dad stabbed his cell.
Okay. I need to ask you some questions, Katie. Are you with your dad right now?
No, I'm with my mom.
Okay. How old is your dad?
He is...
Approximately?
Forty-nine.
Okay. Is he awake?
Yes.
Okay. Katie, is he breathing?
I don't know. I had to leave. He locked me out of the house.
Okay. We have help coming to you right now. Stay on the phone with me, okay?
As always, use 911 in emergency situations only, when law enforcement, fire, or EMS is needed immediately. Before you dial, be prepared to provide your location and any essential information to the dispatcher. Cellphone 911 calls cross boundaries, and your call might be received in a jurisdiction away from where you're calling from. In that case, the dispatcher will have to transfer you, but stay on the line and be patient. Do not hang up until you're instructed to do so. If you call 911 by accident, do not hang up. Stay on the line to inform the dispatcher of that mistake. Never pre-program 911 into your cellphone, as this can lead to accidental calls. Be sure that young children know how to call 911 from cellphones. Teach them to press 911, and then send, or the green button. Also, make sure they know when it's okay to dial 911, and when it isn't. Just like you do here, 911, send. Pour it like this. Did you know that deactivated cellphones can still call 911? The law mandates that even after cellphones are deactivated, they still must have access to 911. Because of this, old cellphones should not be used as toys for children. Instead, consider donating old cellphones to a charitable organization. For all non-emergency calls in Currituck County, dial 232-2216. But when emergency strikes, 911 is the number to call. Whether you have access to a landline or a cellphone, you can still get help when you need it, at the time it's needed the most.
We will start doing a series of these. We're going to invite all of our different departments to participate. This is all done by county staff. They'll be available not only on our website, but on our public access channels, as well as YouTube. And I think this is some of the direction that you asked us to proceed in, and I wanted to go ahead and show that little piece.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Sure.
Is it possible for someone to get a recording when they call 911?
To get a recording with us?
Yes.
No.
It's just, so happened yesterday, I was in Subway in Coin Jock, and a gentleman come up to me, and told me he called 911, and got a recording, said, "We'll leave a message," or whatever, and I told him I didn't think that was possible. But he certainly said that happened, and I decided I would find out tonight.
It's, uh, it is not possible, as far as I'm aware.
But it's possible he could've called that 232 number.
He could've called that and got into the automated recording that the county has. After hours, that kicks in. But 911 is, it's manned.
All the time.
All the time, with several staff people, so it, there should be no instances where you'd get a recording.
Okay.
How about if the system was down?
Well, the few times that the systems went down, we have rerouted those lines to ring at a live person. So I mean, I guess it's certainly could be possible in the circumstances, but not likely.
Well, then about two weeks ago, when we had a thunderstorm or something, it knocked it out.
Yes, yes.
I wonder if it occurred then?
It did. We had someone had a heart attack in Walnut Island when it was all out. And luckily, somebody got in touch with one of the rescue people at the lower Currituck station on his personal cellphone, I think was what happened. But it wasn't but about a four or five minute delay. But all of the systems, I think the county system and the county 911 emergency system were both knocked out due to that thunderstorm.
But we do get those things back up almost as immediately.
As quick as possible.
Yes.
I think that's the first time I've ever heard of it being out. It was the other day.
Yeah, it's the first time I've ever...
Well, there's redundancy building to the system.
Well, there's redundancy, last year, at the summertime, we took two or three lightning strikes, and we, it destroyed some of our equipment. We actually, we've got a backup station at Waterly, so there is a delay for the staff to be able to physically relocate from here to Waterly, and to have the telephone company reroute the lines. But it's, it is a slight delay, but they get those back up very quickly. But I'm not aware of, and never been told, that there's a recording that goes on in the interim, that they would make any kind of recording like that. But like, two weeks ago, there was a, some kind of a thunderstorm that went through here, and there was, both CenturyLink and the power company had issues that affected us, although they weren't here. It did affect our ability for service for, for about almost all day Saturday and part of a Sunday, before it got back to be stable operations.
Okay. Any other questions?
One point that might be good, Mr. Scanlon, to point out, that to go along with this 911, we've, we've done that at my restaurant, is that we have posted signs with the location. Because if people come in, particularly after closing hours, at a boat ramp, if we have somebody lost in Currituck Sound, and they're at Popper Branch Landing, or if they, they pull up in Eagle's Creek, or they pull up in Waterview Shores or Walnut Island, they don't know where they're at. And we have, in addition to putting up our 911 emergency signs, have also listed our GPS location, and also listed the physical location. And it would be, it would be good if we could get more county and private individuals to do that, so if something does happen, that would help the first responders, you know, get there more efficiently.
That's why it's also a good idea if we had those mile markers going through the county, like they do in Dare County and Corolla.
That'd be great.
But I know that's another story. Anything else? All right, here none, and we'll close to public comment. And item three is presentation on the Moayak Sewer Project. Mr. Scanlon, I understand you have put together some information.
Yes, sir. Mr. Scanlon, the last meeting, that staff prepare a presentation to, I guess, kind of go over and bring us up to speed where we are with providing wastewater into the Moayak And to, just a brief, a brief piece of history, we've been working on this for at least two years now, trying to provide wastewater in the Moayak area. And our charge as a staff was that we were to look at developing a system that would, number one, accommodate our existing businesses in the, in the area, number two, allow our existing businesses to expand, and number three, to be able to provide an economic development tool where we could recruit additional businesses. And that was the charge to the staff, and that's what we've been working on. We were also given this additional charge, that we were to look at developing a commercial system. It was not a system to have residential connections on it. So with that charge, and this is a very busy map, but this is a map of the Moayak area, it's overlaid over top of the soils. We had identified originally eight locations where we started doing some analysis. Since we started this, we added probably another four sites that went under study, all to, again, address the three original questions. And then tonight, we're here to talk to the board about, we've limited these down to two options. Number one is to acquire the existing wastewater system at Eagle Creek, or to move forward with constructing a county system. Both of these systems have a force main in common. For anybody who's traveling through the Moayak area, or who lives up there, have seen this under construction. We are getting close to being completed with this. I know this is a small map, but it shows the location of the force main. The force main is actually two pipes. It's a four-inch pipe and a six-inch pipe. It runs from the Welcome Center in Moayak down to the Food Line in Moayak. The pipes are on the railroad side of 168. They're there because the opposite side has the gas line and the water line. And so, due to conflicts with utilities, they were put on the, I guess that would be the east side of 168. It is two pipes. It's a four-inch pipe, is the initial pipe will be in there. Our projected flows over the interim period, we could've put a larger pipe in the ground, but the, the pumping stations and the energy it would take to force the small flow through a large pipe, there was concerns about the affluent becoming septic in the line, causing some treatment problems. So the engineering, we thought it was best to move forward with a four-inch line, which is designed, or sized, to meet the current demand. You already had it trenched, you had a hole open there, so thinking about future expansion, we put a six-inch in line for expansion. But the intention is for both of those lines ultimately to serve the flow needs in the Moayak area. You also see there's two spurs on this. We did get the rural center grant to connect the assisted living facility. So you'll see one spur that is going off into, on the right side, and then you'll see that second spur. We also have a grant to bring on the Newtown Road system, to take it off its system, to bring it to a centralized system. And you see that second spur there. One of our charges is to look at evaluation of the Eagle Creek system. The current permit holder for that system has a permit for a design capacity of 350,000 gallons at the Eagle Creek system. At that, the current Eagle Creek system, although it has a design permit for 350,000 gallons, the treatment side of that equation, only 175,000 gallons has been built out under their first phasing, that's what exists today, under disposal. There are two ponds that are involved, a 247,700 gallons per day irrigation pond, and a 90,000 gallon infiltration pond. And these two ponds don't, when you're looking at capacity, you can't add these two together. When the plant is operating at an efficient level, and the affluent is meeting the state requirements at the state levels, then all the affluent goes into the irrigation pond. If there is a reason why it does not meet its state limits, then it's diverted over into the infiltration pond. And an example of why perhaps it would not reach, it reached its, or cover the limits, the system has got a bit of age on it. It is not as airtight as it was when it was constructed. When we have events like we've had over the last couple of weeks, where you get one of these thunderstorms that come in, and you get a lot of rain over a very short period of time, the plant could see a surge coming in that could overwhelm the 175,000 gallon capacity. So therefore, for that moment in time, the plant doesn't operate efficiently, and the affluent would need to be diverted into the infiltration pond for additional treatment. So the capacity of disposal is actually at 247,700. Something unique about this system is the wastewater permit, you're looking at all three elements of the system, although the golf course is not owned by the same entity who owns the utility. So there is an agreement between the golf course and the utility, which we'll, I'll discuss in a little bit. But if you think about, the affluent is put into the irrigation pond, and at that point, it sort of changes hands, and the golf course draws it out of the irrigation pond, and they irrigate the golf course with it. And with the current infrastructure, the golf courses has the ability to handle 262,625 gallons per day. Just to give you some visuals, this is a close-in shot of the actual treatment plant itself. This is a little bit further away. It shows you the larger pond that wraps around from the left to the top, that is the irrigation pond. The pond to the south is the infiltration pond, and it's got the plant sitting in the Some of the advantages and opportunities of why we would consider acquiring the Eagle Creek system, the first one is time. The permits exist, the plant exists, and in a very short period of time, we actually can make some improvements and move forward on that system. It has capacity. Again, with some capital investments, there is some additional capacity that could be acquired at that system. The third one, and we'll talk about this, this will be a recurring theme, is that there currently is some conflicts contractually between the golf course and the utility. The county could bring our resources to the table and help resolve that. And the last bullet there is, this is considered an environmentally green system, with the irrigation being spread over, the affluent being irrigated over, a large acreage and over the golf course. It actually has a nice green element to it. Some of the challenges with the Eagle Creek system, we had, the Bissell Professional Groups had prepared an assessment of the physical plant itself, and some of the findings they had. The current 175,000 gallons a day treatment plant, it does have some deficiencies in its operations today. It would require $134,000 investment to bring it up to a current standard without creating any additional capacity in the plant system. As I showed you earlier, the current treatment is 175,000. In order to max that out, to put another 175,000 in place to get to its 350,000 gallon permit level, it would take a $381,000 investment. The pond itself, the infiltration, or the irrigation pond, it was at 247. To get that up to 350 would require some additional capital investment. It would take $174,000 estimated to get that up to its capacity. The golf course is, the, it has, the golf course can take 262,000 gallons of the affluent out of the irrigation pond and spray on the golf course. That's the limit of the infrastructure when it's there. We did not evaluate what it would cost to be able to take irrigation on the golf course, although the permit will allow up to 321,000 gallons to be sprayed on that. We're being told it's just a matter of additional sprayheads, and perhaps some additional piping, and they can go ahead and move that up to 321. But that cost itself, right now, has not been identified. But as you notice here, if we did all this work, you'd end up with a treatment and disposal at 350, and you'd have the irrigation on the golf course at 321. So one of the challenges is there's a 29,000 gallons per day disconnect between what the plant could treat, and what you could actually get rid of. Again, a recurring thing back to the golf course, the current agreement, as I mentioned before, the golf course is owned by a separate party than the actual utility. There is an agreement between the utility and the golf course that's in place today, and it only allows, or it limits, the flow onto the golf course can only come from three places, the Eagle Creek subdivision, the clubhouse at the golf course, and the Moayak Middle School. So in order for any additional flows to go to the golf course, that agreement will have to be renegotiated. There is some cost associated with the golf course taking on additional affluent, pumping, having the pumps run longer certainly has an electrical cost to it, having additional irrigation out there to be able to take the 321, there's a cost associated with that. We are being told that the golf course would be amicable to accepting additional flows, but you'd have to negotiate that agreement. And we are being told that a ten-year agreement could be put in place for additional costs of about $195,000. And then to the 11th year, or I guess the 9th year, you would end up renegotiating that for future years. Another piece is, I just showed you a map a few minutes ago about the force main. The force main ends at the Food Line. In order to get flows at the Eagle Creek system, we'd have to expand that line and take it from the Food Line down to the Eagle Creek. And that has a price tag of about $789,000 associated with that. So in addition to any acquisition price we would have with Eagle Creek system, we've identified another $1.4 million of capital improvements we would have to make in order to be able to get the plant to accept the flows that we have identified. And in addition to that, you'd have a $19,500 annual operating fee increased, at least for the first 10 years, fees to pay to the golf course to allow additional affluent to go on the golf course. We, as I mentioned, the Bissell Professional Group did not evaluate either the existing 90,000 gallon infiltration pond. We've been told and are led to believe that there is some sludging and organic buildup in that pond. There will be some small cost in maintaining that facility to get it back up to its standard. We also did not assess the age of the collection system, the pipes that are out in the residential area. We do know that there is a inundation problem. When it does rain, we are seeing these spikes of flows, so we do know that there's some age on the system. I think every two houses share a pumping system, it's a vacuum system, and it's about the age of the system is where maintenance of those and replacing of those is starting to become a bit of an issue. And we also know that the system, as it stands there today, is currently under a notice of violation from the state for a handful of operational issues, the majority of those associated with this agreement with the golf course, and the usage of the two ponds. There's a question by the state of how those are currently being used. Also a challenge of the system, it is, it is about 10 years old, so it does have a little bit of age on it. You are going to start seeing repairs and maintenance costs and operating costs increase on it. If we go to the Eagle Creek system, one of our original charges was that we were to design a commercial system. We would have to move through the dynamics of now we have a blended system, where we have commercial and residential, which was, again, opposite of one of our charges. And again, the bottom would be our ability to negotiate a fair and equitable purchase price of that system. Wanted to go ahead and show this graphic to you, is you can see, it's shown in two columns, depending on what ultimate capacity we look at, the Eagle Creek system. We know we can do the improvements to the, if you were the owner of the plant, you could do the improvements, and you can get it up to the 262 with a capital investment. It would take an agreement with the golf course to be able to increase the golf course to 321. So depending on which column you want to look at, will tell you right now what our maximum capacity could be. The Eagle Creek system identified at buildout, they need 105,000 gallons per day of flow. We have been advised, if we are to move forward with the acquisition of this system, the purchase price will, will have a condition in it, that we accept the flows from Southridge, so you see the flows of Southridge are both listed up there. The county has identified 33,200 gallons of flow that we have, that's associated with the Welcome Center, the assisted living, and Newtown Road facility. And over the last year or so, we have been talking to the business community along the 168 corridor, and from what we know today, from the businesses we've talked to, we would need 37,000 gallons a day to meet the demand that's out there today, that's already been identified. So, again, looking at this, if the capacity of Eagle Creek is 262, we've identified these one, two, three, four different demands today, that would leave 44,000 gallons remaining before this system is maxed out. You can go on the golf course and do some additional improvements there, additional sprayheads, some additional piping, and you can get up to the 321. And at that level, you'd have a little over 100,000 gallons that would be available, and at that point in time, we're not real sure where the system goes. At that point in time, you have met your design capacity of the plant. The question isn't necessarily treatment, it's disposal, and we feel like at this stage, we're not real sure where you would go to try to get disposal over and above the 350,000 gallons. So if you move in this direction, the easiest way to probably think about it is, you're buying into the last 100,000 gallons that exist in this system. If we compare that to, if we moved ahead and the county built our system...
Ooh.
I told you, it's time to go home.
You know how to run a meeting, Dan.
If the county moved forward with designing our system, we would design it in this fashion. It would have a design capacity of 600,000 gallons per day. We would build that out in 100,000 gallon incremental trains, so as demand came to us, we would put additional 100,000 out, so that, although it has a design capacity of 600,000, the first train would be 100,000 gallons. We would match treatment with disposal, so they would equal each other. The whole system would be controlled under one permit by the county, so we would not have the dynamics associated with having to have negotiations of our disposal areas that the Eagle Creek system brings in. The colors here seem to get a little washed out, but this is a schematic of what our system would look like. The green being the treatment area, the hash be the expansion area, the dark green being the first 100,000 gallon train, yellow being the infiltration ponds or the upset ponds, which would be similar to the 90,000 gallon ponds that we saw in the Eagle Creek system, and the blue being the disposal. In that schematic, we could take that, and we have several different parcels that we've identified, that we could put this system on that parcel. The opportunities that are created by the county moving forward, it would, first of all, it would be a new plant, it wouldn't be a plant that takes 10 years of age on it. We would have the ability to go up to 600,000 gallons. You're not buying the last 100,000 gallons of an existing system, you're creating the first 100,000 gallons of a system that could be expanded to 600,000. Again, it would all be under single permit, so you don't have the dynamics of having to negotiate. negotiate a disposal agreement with the golf course, and the subsequent in future years having to renegotiate that agreement with the golf course, and really having probably minimum leverage at that point in time to renegotiate a fair contract. With technology, the way it has progressed and changed over the last 10 years, just about any system you build today is going to have a higher standard, a better quality of affluent that comes out of it. This certainly would be true in this case. Since 10 years since the Eagle Creek system was built, and the technology exists, that we would have a cleaner affluent coming out of the back end of the plant. An advantage of this plant is the sites we're looking at are not surrounded by residential communities. They're somewhat isolated. The challenges, though, with moving forward with our system, one is going to be time. It'll take us probably 18 months before we could start accepting flows in a system the county built. If you go back to the Eagle Creek system, we do have some capital investments upfront. It will take us several months to get that flowing. So you're looking at probably six months difference, six months longer to get into this plant than the Eagle Creek system. That certainly would be a challenge. And then any plant in the state of North Carolina that's over 100,000 gallons requires an environmental assessment be performed. So although we would get in, our first phase would be under that limit, we would have to move immediately towards having an EA performed so that we're in a position that when we expand our plant, we have the necessary approvals in place. Want to go back to the slide here and show the difference now. If this is representing the county going ahead and building our plant, we no longer have to worry about or accommodate the needs from Eagle Creek or South Ridge. So our first phase would be 100,000 gallon system. You see our two capacities have been identified, so we would start out with just a little under 300,000 gallons of available additional capacity that could be marketed and promoted. And at our full design capacity at 600,000, we would have over half a million gallons of waste water, wastewater that would be available that, again, we could market up and down to encourage business growth along our quarter. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
All right. Who has questions?
I have a question with Eagle Creek. Is there also not a contract or an agreement between the wastewater treatment plant and Eagle Creek themselves, the homeowners, that they would not, that it would be used for those three areas? Or those two, Eagle Creek and the middle school?
The contract exists between the utility and the golf course, not between the individual property owners and either party. So that agreement, when it has to be renegotiated, would only be between the utility and the golf course. The homeowners would not have a, it's not a party that would have to come to the table.
And there was only about six months difference, and if we took over Eagle Creek with their problems to fix their problems in order to start using it and building our own plant?
By the time you designed the Forest Main to extend down from Food Line down to Eagle Creek, design, permit, construct, to start working on the engineering to expand the plant, you know, there's a timeframe associated with that would be the same timeframe that we were moving forward with finalizing the engineering for our system, and it's about a six-month delay would be the difference, the net difference between the two processes.
And just a clarification, wastewater is like county water. It is paid by the user, not by county taxes, correct?
Whatever we do with utilities will be, the fee will be borne by the folks that are customers to that utility. You know, general property taxes do not go to support any of the utilities that we operate.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Scanlon, has there been any preliminary figures? I think I heard you answered this, but just to be clear, has there been any preliminary figures put together as to replacing the, say, like the vacuum pumps and that type of stuff? And the mains, if 10, it's 10 years old, and we had to go in there and start replacing stuff everywhere, so I mean, it's going to get quite expensive quite quick.
We have not done an evaluation of the residential collection system to know what degree of investment we would have to make in it. We do know that it is not airtight, or as airtight as it was when it was designed. We know that because we can see after rain events, a definite surge that comes to the plant, so we know that there's stormwater is getting in the system. But how many of the current pump stations would have to be replaced or repaired, or what that would cost? We haven't gotten that far in our due diligence yet.
And I think you also brought up a very good point, that after a 10-year initial agreement period with the golf course, well, then our bargaining power kind of goes away, and we're at the mercy of dealing then, and we don't have any chips.
That's correct. We have, we've had some preliminary conversations with the new owners of the golf course. They are willing. They come to the table willing. It's mutually beneficial. They see that, this is, you know, to irrigate the golf course, but there is a cost associated with this irrigation, and they made it very clear to us that that cost should be borne by the utility and not by the golf course. And so it'd be a matter of negotiating those. Now, we did not negotiate the 195,000. That was another party that was looking to acquire an interest in that, and their negotiation had come to where they identified these additional costs and they annualized them, so over a 10-year period, it would cost 195,000. So it would be a one-time upfront $195,000 payment that would cover 10 years. So somewhere in that period of time, you would have to renegotiate whatever the logical next extension of that would be.
I guess my point is, he may not be the owner of the golf course at that next point in time when that comes about. And also, the golf course may not even be open during that point in time. What liability would we have to assume if the golf course was to close?
If we acquired the system, we would make sure that we had the necessary easements and access rights to the golf course so that we could enter upon the grounds and to continue to spray.
But then it'd cost us money.
There would be a cost to maintain that area. Right now, the golf course maintains it as part of its operations, that if they were to cease to exist, the burden of that maintenance would certainly come back to that utility. One of the items under the notice of violation is exactly this point. The state wants to see the agreement modified to reflect the current circumstances, in that it has some fail-safe language in it that allows the utility, under any circumstances, to be able to access the golf course if there's a, whether the golf course ceases to exist, or in a period of renegotiating the agreement, if for some reason those negotiations would break down, that the utility would still need to have some rights to be able to go on to that golf course and guarantee that the affluent was being irrigated on the golf course.
And I guess one last question. We're not sure yet contingency for purchase only includes South Ridge, correct?
Well, we did, as the board is aware, we have made an offer to acquire the Eagle Creek system. They contacted me verbally Friday to set a meeting up to further those negotiations. Today, we got a email in that would be, I guess we'd consider a counter to our proposal. In it was several talking points. It applies, implies that we would, as part of the acquisition, South Ridge would be, we would be required to accept the South Ridge, but there is some additional language that could be read that would imply that perhaps some additional properties would come with it. It's something that we would have to get clarification on. Some of the talking points, there's some vagueness to it that depend on how you read it, can be interpreted different ways that we'd have to get clarifications, but that would be one of them. Specifically, we know South Ridge would come with the deal. The question is, we're not sure if any of the other properties would come too.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Scanlon, the approximate capacity of Eagle Creek now is about 175?
It is, right now it's 175.
Right. So basically, what the Moyac system would require us to do is to get away from what we said we were going to do. We said we were going to provide for economic development and commercial only. This plan will call for us to front the money for 42,100 gallons for South Ridge plus anybody else, and all we're going to add is 33,200 gallons. So what we're doing is we're getting totally away from the original direction we gave staff, which was to find a solution to provide economic development so that we can help the businesses out in Moyac, and we can attract future businesses. In fact, in this plan, what we're doing is we're providing free service upfront for South Ridge. Am I correct?
Well, it certainly will be a challenge to explain why we are not letting all the other residential connections connect when we're accepting, I mean, Eagle Creek, we could explain Eagle Creek comes with the package that's existing, but if you accept additional residential in there, it would be hard to tell other residential developments in the area that you would not be accepting their flows. That would be, that'd be a tough question.
Thank you.
I have one question, Mr. Scanlon. Observation, you said that the Eagle Creek system, we're buying the last 100,000 gallons.
Yes, sir. And I base that on...
The 350?
Well, I base that on, here is, well, there's a disconnect between the treatment, which is 350,000 gallons, and what right now the disposal limit is. And depending on how you look at disposal, it is either 321 or 262. 262 as it sits today. Some unknown improvements could be made to get you to 321, but the limits of the permit is 321. So depending on how you view that, I'll go back to this chart. You know, we're accepting these four identified flows, so if 262 is the maximum disposal on that system, when we bring these flows to it, there'd be 44,000 remaining capacity. And once you use that 44 up, right now, we're not sure where Eagle Creek system goes. Obviously, there's enough land there to put additional treatment, but you'll have to have additional disposal. We'd have to be looking to incorporate some additional land probably into the equation to accommodate additional disposal. If you look at the 321, and that is by going out to the golf course, again, and putting some additional sprayheads on, putting some additional infrastructure in, the golf course can take up to 321. So if you made that capital investment, then you're purchasing 100,000 gallons of capacity, and then when that is used up, you're at the same position. We're not sure where the system goes after that point in time. It would require either some drastic improvements around some areas of golf course, or you'd have to bring additional lands in for disposal, or you'd start piping disposal back out to different locations, and that would be the challenge. So once you get this 100,000 onto this system, you've got some engineering questions you've got to answer versus the county system. If we were to move in that direction, we can just drop another train down, and another train, and you can end up with five or six trains there and grow your capacity up to 600,000 gallons.
And what would happen to the system that currently sits at Moyac Commons?
Both, the presentation I'm doing tonight has no involvement with Moyac Commons. It leaves it as is, and just leaves it alone. From conversation, historical conversation we had the board, if you notice, under the county, that number used to be 73,200. What I've done is taken the 40,000 of Moyac Commons just completely out of that equation. If we went and built a county system, it certainly, we would like to come back to the board and talk about, being since there will be capacity there, ultimately, we'd like to take that system offline, the Moyac Commons, and take it all to one place. I think there's efficiencies of operations. It certainly would be ease of operations, and we would like to move in that direction. If we go to the Eagle Creek system, we probably wouldn't make a proposal to do that, because when you only have 44,000 gallons available to you, you don't want to take existing businesses and capacity offline when it's existing. So the presentation tonight is to do nothing with Moyac Commons, leave it just as it is.
But wouldn't the businesses in Moyac Commons benefit by going on to a larger system, whether it's Eagle Creek or Curry Tuck, from a dollar?
They would benefit from, well, under a county system, they'd benefit because there would be additional capacity available. Currently, the 40,000 at Moyac Commons is allocated to all the lots in some capacity. So we've had issues before with, if a business changes ownership and it goes to a restaurant, when there's only so much allocation to a lot, it restricts how many seats it could have, how many patrons it could have, because it only has so much wastewater. So by taking them to a larger system, you could alleviate that, and there wouldn't be this constraint on the businesses of what kind of business you have in there, number one. Number two being, it is relatively a small system with relatively a few amount of users on it. The more users you could bring to a system, overall, the rates themselves will be better. And the analysis we've done, whether you go to Eagle Creek or you go to a county system and you took Moyac Commons with it, they would see improved rates.
But as Moyac Commons sits today, if we had a major restaurant, let's say Applebee's or Ruby Tuesday, they could not locate at Moyac Commons because of capacity limitations?
It would be a challenge to be able to locate in there again...
Under the Moyac Commons system.
Because each lot has a allocated amount of that wastewater that is assigned to it, so it would be a challenge, yes.
So in essence, it would enhance the goal that we have set out to have central sewer for economic development purposes?
Either direction we go in would certainly enhance the commercial opportunities at Moyac Commons, yes.
Yes, sir.
In light of Board Chairman's going, why shouldn't we just go ahead and include Moyac Commons into it because of the tax rate they have to pay now that possibly the other new businesses that we're building to accommodate will not have that tax rate? So to be totally fair, we'd have to bring Moyac along with it at the same time, in my opinion.
Well, the challenge with that is in this chart right here, is Moyac Commons is 40,000 gallons a day. If we brought them to the Eagle Creek system, we would be...
I'm not talking about the Eagle Creek system. I'm talking about the new county system.
Well, if we go to the new county systems, staff's position would be, we would certainly be coming to you to take them to that new system. We just think there's operational efficiencies that consolidating all that into one county system would be preferred option by the county. In order to present these two systems tonight, we took it out because I don't believe that opportunity exists upfront if we go the Eagle Creek route to take that 40,000 to Eagle Creek. It puts additional capital pressures on the Eagle Creek system.
I distinctly remember us telling the citizens in the Moyac area that one of our goals would be to, if and when we got ready to build a new system or acquire a new system, that we would try to take the affluent retention away from those areas where homes are at and those types of things. So I think we'll be fulfilling what we told them we would do.
Plus also, that plant can be removed...
Yes, it could.
If you diverted that wastewater.
Yes, it could be.
And it could be used on another county facility.
Another county facility or sold. There's other counties that would be in the market to look for something like that, because it's relatively new.
Mr. Gregory?
Yeah, I was just going to say a word about Moyac Commons. I certainly don't think we should be in no hurry to remove that system and cause us to have been lodged when maybe we put in quicker or sooner, because that is a 40,000 gallon plant, and there's probably only 15,000 using it now. There's a lot of capacity at Moyac Commons, and it's a new plant. So, you know, we could put in, say, under the 100,000, not have to go for the environmental statement, what you have to do when you go over 100,000, but we certainly got a lot of capacity there, under 100,000 if we count that Moyac Commons plant, too.
One of the options we could look at is taking the Moyac Commons plant and moving it to these sites. If we were to go to a county system, you could look at the feasibility of taking that plant from behind Food Line and just taking it up and connecting it to the rest of the system so that you're maintaining that capacity, but you're consolidating the location and the disposal all in one area.
Yeah, I agree with Mr. Gregory. I don't think we need to do anything that's going to tire hands and have to go through a whole lot of permitting processes right off the bat, and so I agree with that.
Yes, sir.
I don't disagree with that, but it's not fair to the existing businesses at Moyac Commons that they have to pay a tax rate over and above their sewer rates at a higher cost than anything that we might hook to a new system. There's got to be an equalization in there to be fair to all businesses. It's not fair to charge Food Line or any of the restaurants that's in Moyac Commons now a tax rate for the service district, and then a fee that would be higher possibly than what the new system might charge.
Oh, I would have to agree with that. You may not be able to do it day one, but it certainly needs to be something that's done as quickly as possible.
Day two.
I mean, it's certainly staff's position that we would like to consolidate the utilities up there into as few as we possibly can. Certainly, but I think our concern is what Mr. Gregory stated was, coming out of the box initially, is just trying to make sure we've got capacity for those businesses we've identified. Eagle Creek is a bit more challenged to try to consolidate. We certainly in a position to consolidate quicker if we go. But I mean, I don't disagree with what you're saying.
Well, I want to say this. First of all, I want to recognize the previous board for moving forward with a recognition of economic development in the county and expanding. At that time, we were looking at maybe expanding the Moyac Commons or whatever, and getting the grant for the Forest Main, and certainly taking... the grant for the Forest Main and certainly taking care of the other system that the county is responsible for. So I just want to, first of all, congratulate that board for moving forward on that. Now, since that time, we've studied this enough. We've looked at it, and I think Mr. Scanlon has got a letter from Utilities Inc. or Sandler Utilities or whatever. And I'm going to ask that at our next meeting, we take action on this after he's had time to go through the numbers and present us some numbers of this one's going to cost this, this one's going to cost this, and then the board look at the two systems and make a decision. It's time to move on. I think everybody would nod their head yes on that. It's time to move on.
I'll make a motion we do it.
At the next meeting.
That's right.
That gives two weeks.
I'll second that motion.
For you to wrap it up.
Yes, sir.
And make a presentation and staff recommendation of which way to go, and then the board move forward. And we have a motion and a second to do that. Any further discussion?
Just one concern again, that if we go with the Eagle Creek subdivision, that we are allowing a majority of that capacity is going to residential, which is cutting away from what we promised the people up in Moyauk.
And I think that's certainly something everyone will have to consider at our next meeting before we record the vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? All right. Thank you, Mr. Scanlon. You and staff did a good job. You have something else? Okay. Item four is public hearing in action on PB 10-21. Gallup Funeral Services Incorporated requests a special use permit to operate a crematorium in an existing building located at 100 LeBue Avenue, Tax Map 123, Parcel 52A, Pals Point, Papa Branch Township. Mr. Woody? I believe it's a special use permit. So I have three people that have signed up to speak. All three of you need to come forward and be sworn. And anyone else who wishes to speak in favor of or opposition and present evidence, you need to come forward now. Going to swear in one time. All right, place your left hand on the Bible and raise your right hand. You swear to tell the truth, hold truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do.
All right, Mr. Woody?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you just mentioned, this is a special use permit request for a human crematorium. On the aerial photograph on your screen, you can see the property is located in the old LeBue Building. It's in the southern part of Currituck County, on the west side of Currituck Highway. Property is currently zoned heavy manufacturing, which does allow this use with the special use permit. You can see the property to the, mostly to the north, and to the west of it also is zoned heavy manufacturing. So you do have that zoning pattern present in the area. Land use plan designates this property or this area as limited service in the Point Harbor subarea. The property itself, which is highlighted in blue, is just under one acre in size. It's currently a warehouse and has an accessory office location within it. Building serves as a septic system for any kind of wastewater needs. One thing I do want to point out as I move through this is, when this building was built, obviously, it was built for a warehouse-type facility, so the parking you see there was put in for a warehouse. In our UDO now, we actually require a one space per 200 square feet parking standard for this type of use, which is a retail standard. This particular proposal does not include a funeral home or any kind of visitation areas. It's basically just a crematorium where that service is performed, so there is no retail component. In order to make this work, the applicant has requested reduction in the parking standard. Staff, and we agree with that. We think that it isn't a retail standard, what they're doing. You don't have in-and-out traffic, day in and day out. They did provide a parking study to support that. So I will note, as part of this request, they are asking for a parking reduction. What they've requested in their parking studies is that their parking be based on the number of employees that report to work, the number of vehicles they have, and the size of their management staff. So basically, they're asking the parking be based on the actual use of the building, and staff is comfortable with that. So I just wanted to get that out there. In your case analysis, you can find the findings of fact for the special use permit. I'm not going to read through each of those, but staff does think they're able to meet each of the findings for this use permit. The technical review committee reviewed this request at their June meeting. During that meeting, probably the biggest issue that came up was to resolve the parking, which I think that's been done. Also, some questions about state permitting, which they have to meet, and they have done. So the technical review committee did recommend approval at their June meeting. Staff also recommends, the planning staff recommends approval of this, and we added a couple of conditions for that. One is if the use permits approved, they submit a final site plan for final approval. The special use permit is for only a human crematorium and doesn't authorize the operation of a funeral home or chapel, and that kind of goes back to the parking concern. Any loading or unloading associated with this use shall occur within a fully enclosed building. It's all going to happen indoors. And finally, that the use be operated in compliance with NCD or air quality permitting, which is a state permit required for these operations. Right now, the number of cremations they do is far below what triggers a major permit. So at this point, they'll operate under the basic state requirements. The planning board did hear this case at the July meeting. The planning board also recommended approval of this, and they, too, agreed with the parking reduction. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Anyone have any questions of Mr. Woody? Hearing none, I'm going to open the public hearing and ask Ms. Gallup. Do you have any questions or concerns with the conditions that have been proposed?
Good evening. For the record, my name is Courtney Gallup. I'm the president and the manager and the funeral director for Gallup Funeral Services Incorporated in Axhead, North Carolina. We do appreciate the time that you devoted to this item this evening. I am comfortable with all of staff's conditions and any others that may be discussed here tonight. We've come before you in a spirit of cooperation and education and openness. I think my application speaks for itself. I have, for your information, brought with me tonight a gentleman who is from B&amp;L Cremation Systems, Patrick. He is here to answer any questions you might have on the technical nature of the equipment, how the equipment runs, all the high-tech information. He's our expert. I also have with me tonight Ed Brooks. He is the Realtor in charge and representing the property owner. He can answer any historical questions or structural questions on the building. And I do have with me at my disposal this evening a general contractor under North Carolina who can answer any building modification, building code-related questions. As you see in my applications, the, in my application, changes to the building will be absolutely minimal. The building will look and act very much like it does today. We're going to install some equipment. We're going to run an exhaust pipe through the extreme back corner of the building, which we evened out, will be visible from the road. So what you see pretty much out there today is what will remain. I'm obviously at your disposal to answer any questions you may have about the cremation process, about cremation trends, how the business will operate, you know, our business model. I'm at your disposal.
Anyone have any questions of Ms. Gallup? All right, we'll call the next person. We have, I guess that's Patrick?
Yeah.
Could you give us your name and address for the record? I couldn't read you right. I'm glad she told me you were Patrick.
I apologize. My handwriting's not that good. But my name's Patrick Muskin, and my address, you said?
Yes, sir.
Would be 1130066 Street North, Apartment 115, Largo, Florida, 33773.
We keep that for the record. Does anyone have any questions? Is there anything you'd like to add to it?
No, I'll be more than happy to answer anything, but I don't have anything prepared.
No questions?
Just one curiosity.
Mm-hmm.
How long does it take to perform a cremation?
On average, about two and a half hours.
Two and a half hours.
I mean, that time decreases the more you do in one day, the hotter the machine gets, but two and a half is about...
Three and a half for you. Huh? Three and a half for you.
Three and a half for me. Any other questions?
It remains an esteemed observation.
Yeah. I want to know why you want to burn twice. Well, thank you. Mr. Ed Brooks, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Just for the record, my name is Edward Brooks, and I represent Jerry Smith, who's the owner of the building. My company is First Commercial LLC. I'm a real estate broker licensed in the state of North Carolina. I reside at 124 Ship's Watch Drive in Duck, North Carolina. I believe everything has been explained about the building that needs to be, but if there are any other questions about the ownership of the building or anything else you might have, I'd be happy to answer those questions.
Anyone have any questions of Mr. Brooks? Hearing none. Any questions of staff? We'll close the public hearing and ask the board for a motion.
Move for approval.
Motion for approval.
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Thank you. Item five, public hearing in action. PB 10-22, Currituck County, requests a text amendment to correct and clarify language in the following chapters of the Unified Development Ordinance. Chapter two, zoning districts. Chapter four, overlay districts. Chapter six, environmental protection. Chapter eight, parking and driveways. Chapter 11, permit and site plan requirements. Chapter 12, map and text amendments. Chapter 13, board of adjustment, and chapter 16, non-conforming. Mr. Woody?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And to clarify, this is a text amendment request that's being brought forward by the planning staff. What we do, and since my time here, I've been planning director about three years, and during the course of a year, is we come across errors in the zoning code of the UDO or if we find things that are inconsistent or things that have created a problem, we try to keep a log of those. And about once a year, give or take a little bit, we want to bring those forward and try to get some of those errors corrected. We, in the planning department, we just kind of call it housekeeping revisions. And that's what's before you tonight. There are actually 10 of those in your packet. I think rather than go through each one of those in a lot of detail, maybe the easiest thing is if the board, if it's at your pleasure, I'd say just kind of put it out there, open up the floor. If you have any questions for me on any particular one, I'll be happy to go through it. Mostly what you're seeing here is clarifying, you know, typos in the ordinance or incorrect zoning references. You see where we've clarified or made sure we're referencing the correct forms that we're using right now, applications.
So there is no changes to the ordinance you're proposing. It's just corrections in the vernacular and...
Clarification.
Clarifications.
Yes, there's no policy changes in this. There's nothing that we're, when you come to do something in Currituck County tomorrow from the planning department, you're going to do the same thing we've been having you do, although in some instances, the actual references in the ordinance were incorrect. So...
This is something we've asked staff to do for many years. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I have one question. Can we take all of these after the public hearing as one vote, or do we need to vote on each one individually?
I'll do it as one vote.
I think one vote, because we advertise them collectively.
Thank you, sir.
Is everybody okay with that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, have any questions?
Woody, on the bottom of page 14, 6.4.6, the last one. I know it changes from North Carolina National Flood Insurance Program V-zone to Currituck County V-zone. What is the difference in those two?
The primary difference is, and this probably isn't going to maybe not surprise some folks, the Currituck County V-zone form has more detail in it. That's the form that we've used in my three years we've been here. The ordinance, however, references the North Carolina form. Now, what happened is, is an engineer came in and said, "I don't want to do your form." And he pulled up the ordinance and says, "Well, actually, you referenced North Carolina," which is true, so we let him do that. The form that Currituck County has is actually consistent with FEMA, what FEMA requires. So I'd say the form that this county's used for at least three years, possibly more, is consistent with what the, you know, the federal government technical bulletins request we use. Not a lot of difference. The Currituck County form just requires a little more detail from the engineer, and what they're doing is they're verifying that when the structure's built, it will be safe from wave action floodwaters. So, and this is mostly going to apply, you know, almost exclusively to waterfront properties. There's some second row and occasionally third row properties are in V-zone, but for the most part, it's oceanfront. And again, I'll say, that is a form we've used for the three years I've been here.
Which is based on FEMA's requirements.
FEMA's technical bulletin, that's correct.
And that's what you recommend we continue doing?
I would recommend that, yes. And we actually, we called the state flood office and FEMA, and they, and actually, the state even said that our form was better than theirs. But I mean, you...
Any other questions? I'm going to open the public hearing. I had no one that signed up. Is there anyone that wishes to speak to this issue? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing and ask the board for a motion.
So I move, Mr. Chairman, for all the amendments.
Have a motion.
Second.
A second and a further discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Item six.
Mr. Chairman. Could I make one statement before we move forward?
Yes, ma'am.
Since we have just voted to bring the language up to date on these ordinance, I'm still having a concern, still hearing, and I know it's not your fault, it's not planning department, but when we do an ordinance, if we can enforce it, what's the use? And I'm talking about the outer banks. There's operations that are happening down there, they're getting fined, they're paying that fine, and to me, an ordinance is the same thing as a law. It's a rule, and you're supposed to follow it. So why are these people allowed to continue breaking the law at the outer banks?
That might be a good one for the attorney.
How do you stop it?
Does that sound familiar?
Let me explain, first of all, that the...
You pay her dollars.
...action is being, is taking place currently, but we have a process set forth in our Unified Development Ordinance that we have to go through and get to ultimate enforcement for those who are insistent they are not going to comply with the county's ordinances. So first, we require a notice of violation, well, first, we receive a complaint and investigation is made by a code enforcement officer. We then require a notice of violation to be sent to the alleged offender, giving them an opportunity to voluntarily comply with the ordinance, because the notice of violation even includes what they must do in order to comply. When they fail to do that, then we begin the issuance, or staff begins the issuance of civil citations, up to $500 per day for every day the violation continues. Now, in a department-department relationship, we've kind of determined that when it gets to about a couple thousand dollars worth of civil penalties is where it's, where it's forwarded to me, and we take it, we usually end up either sending a demand letter to the violator demanding their immediate compliance, a letter from me as county attorney, or in more egregious circumstances, we'll go ahead and file a complaint in court in order to seek collection of the civil penalties that have accrued to that date and for every day thereafter they continue to violate while the civil action is pending, and also to seek in order from the court an injunction requiring their compliance with all the county ordinances to which they should comply. Now, that, just because of the time process, is that takes, it takes a certain period of time that's only allowed by the ordinance, but also, once you get into the judicial system, you also have certain timeframes and under the rules of civil procedure about which a party has a right to 30 days, can be extended to 60 days to respond to the county's complaint, for example. So that, that extends it out a little further. And as you go along, there are some folks that just assume would rather violate and take their chances, or there are those that will take the other option to further extend the time for ultimate compliance by appealing the initial determination by the zoning administrator or code enforcement officer that they're in violation to the board of adjustment. And so then, then they have to be scheduled for a board of adjustment hearing, following which they can appeal to superior court and further delay ultimate compliance. And that's statutory as well as included in our unified development ordinance. So it's not as if we can't enforce our ordinances, if there's not a method to do so and cause ultimate compliance, but there is a process, due process and otherwise, that's provided to parties that we have to follow.
Is, is it, I know it's set forth by general statutes, but is our ordinance lengthened it beyond what the general statute requires, or can it be shortened? In other words, can, can the time and process be shortened some? Well, summer's just about over.
I do not, I've expanded, well, we may have, typically, I do know that the code enforcement statutes I've been here have made every effort to give someone the least amount of time that we can provide them to comply, and following their figure to then initiate the... to then initiate the issuance of civil citations. We could conceivably, I guess, to shorten the time up maybe a couple weeks, if someone's not complying, has not appealed to the Board of Adjustment, could, for example, file a civil lawsuit, rather than waiting for it to accrue to, to a couple thousand dollars, do it, do it earlier on the, even the issuance of the first citation, and their failure to pay that. Because again, we're trying to seek compliance, not necessarily seek the revenue, so.
Like, if you had, if you had someone that's just blatantly abusing this thing over and over and over again, just not paying any attention, you, could you order an injunction just to shut them down?
You, you can see that, that it's not, it's not easy, nor readily available. You have to be able to show that there, that there will be irreparable harm to the county if, if the injunction is not issued. It's very difficult to show to a court and convince a judge that a county as an entity is going to somehow be harmed if someone continues to violate. Obviously, you make the argument that the public in general may, may be harmed, but that's still one of the three elements that you've got to be able to prove and show in order to get an injunction up front. You have to also show there's no other adequate remedy at law, and, and that, in, in terms of balancing the, the two parties' rights, you, you, the interests of the county outweighs that of the individual. So you get into some, some legal argument under the rules of civil procedure, but that, that is a possibility, but it's not.
Because where it, where it is now, you see, if it takes two or three months to get anything done, well, the season's over, they could care less, huh? They're through anyway, their business is locked up.
At least with regard to, to this season, you're right, they may not, they may not care, but, but ultimately, in terms of having to pay the, for a civil citation, the amount that's accrued, and, and to ultimately bend to a judgment that requires their compliance going forward, I mean, that, that is of some benefit to the county in any way.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
We're talking about civil. Is there any way we can make this criminal? So a deputy sheriff.
We do provide for it to be criminal, but I can tell you that my experience in this judicial district is, the judicial, the district court judges do not typically like to see zoning violations in our criminal courts. They view it as a civil matter and civil dispute. I've, I've seen district court judges in this judicial district dismiss criminal summons in zoning matters, saying that they do not belong in criminal court and should be dealt with civil. And so it's been my practice to just go ahead to civil court, rather than to lengthen the time out even longer, to have a criminal summons dismissed because of that belief.
I was wondering if we could double barrel it?
Well, we certainly do that.
Yes, sir.
I think it's a lot of food for thought for this coming after the season, and I think there's, if we get our heads together, we can maybe do some things that will work.
But, but the bottom line is, if, if you have an individual that has intent on violating the law no matter what you do, it is very difficult to cause them to be shut down immediately.
Yeah.
Let me ask a question. What is the railroad company up in Moyoc doing? How much have they accrued in fines with the ditch that's, uh, looks like a jungle again?
Right, but they haven't accrued any fines yet. We, we need to get back on addressing who we now believe to be the true, the true, our actual owners, since Norfolk Southern has denied any ownership, although that's who's listed for taxes, is Norfolk Southern. We also now believe that Chesapeake-Alvamar Railroad has, if not an ownership interest, at least a leasehold interest, which under our ordinance would, would give us the ability, yes, you're right, they're, they're pointing each other, give us the ability, I think, to, to hold them, and/or both of them, responsible for their part of the right of way.
Saying both of them.
At our, at our last meeting, when this was discussed, and everybody said it weren't their responsibility, they didn't own it, we had a rather quick-thinking gentleman come forward and say he would claim it.
Yes.
Claim the railroad if nobody wanted it. So, I mean, somebody owns it, somebody's responsible, and.
And we've got that DOT here that night that said they would get right on it, and they, they, I don't think have done their part either.
No.
I think they've ridden by a couple times.
Well, and what's gotten bad, put things worse up there, is DOT is not cutting the grass. So now you've got weedy grass that's two feet tall, then you've got trees and everything, and it makes it look bad for those folks who live, there's a couple of houses there in Moyoc Baptist Church, and the business, and it, because it looks bad.
I sent an email to Senator Bassnight last night. It was July 9th of last year when we tried to get them engaged in it, and they promised they'd get DOT engaged. Well, it's a year later, so I sent the same photographs last night, and asked them if they'd like we get staff to take some new ones, they could compare, and to please try to help us again. So, uh, DOT needs to do its portion, and the railroad needs to do its portion. I don't know how we got on all this, but.
Talking about ordinance.
It needed, it needed to be discussed.
Exactly, and I know that I've been told many times that life is not fair, but it is not fair for those people who are out there and who are willing to abide by the law, to do everything that we ask them to do. And then you have those who have complete disregard for this county, for the people who live here, for the people who pay their taxes and walk along their merry way. And I think, I don't see it happening very fast, so if I'm not seeing it, I know the folks at Currituck County are not seeing it, so that's why I'm asking.
Well, one thing's for sure, we can eliminate all of it if they can't comply.
You had us throw the UDO out? Huh?
That punishes the people that are paying attention to the ordinance, but maybe that would get them on the ball to help make the other ones come into compliance.
Well, and I know there's some frustration over the force tours, but, but there are regular enforcement actions underway continually, and, and most times, you have people that comply once they're sent that notice of violation. So you have, you have a handful of force tour operators that have made it appear, I think, to, to a lot of people, that the county is unable to enforce its ordinance, is when that's not, not actually what we experience on a regular basis.
Most of them are, are working within, as Janet said, working within the guidelines that were established. There are some that are not. I mean, there was a case, uh, just, I believe it was last week, where a guided Jeep tour, the, the people that were driving two of the Jeeps paid the, so I was told from a deputy, paid the, uh, the guide, tipped him very well to let them go off on their own. They were caught over there ringing circles, and they were issued criminal summonses for careless and reckless driving, so.
They're from New Jersey?
Yeah. Uh, so hopefully, the, the guide is not employed with the company anymore. I don't know that, but I, hopefully so.
All right, I'm going to move on to item six. Public hearing in action on the proposed Rural Operating Assistance Program. Mr. Scanlon?
Mr. Chairman, this is state grant funding that we apply for every single year. As part of that application process, we're required to have a public hearing. The, the rope money, the Rural Operating Assistance Program, provides local governments' funding to help assess the transportation needs, or meet the transportation needs of our elderly and disabled citizens, as well as those that have transportation impediments to prevent them from being gainfully employed. We, it does require a local match, 10%, that was included in our budget, and we're applying for a, a total of $142,000 in rope assistance, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Anyone have any questions? Going to open the public hearing. Is there anyone that wishes to speak to this issue? Seeing no one, I'm going to close the public hearing and ask the board for a motion.
Motion for approval.
Have a motion for approval, a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Item seven is appointment to fire an EOMS advisory board. Is that's you, Mr. Wood?
Yes, it is, and I haven't, I had no one come forward.
Need to go another, another meeting? We don't have anybody on the.
I've, I've checked, and there's, I've put the word out, and just nobody's interested in serving. And so to, to the public, if anybody is representing the lower Currituck area and wants to be on the fire advisory board, please contact me, either at my home or at my business.
Or they can contact Ms. Keane to get you the information.
Ms. Keane, yeah, they need to put in an application with Ms. Keane.
Okay, we'll continue that to the next meeting. Item eight is consent agenda.
Motion for approval.
Motion, and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Item nine is commissioners' report. Ms. Taylor?
Just real quick, Moyoc Volunteer Fire Department will not be having their breakfast this month, and I do want to thank Owen for coming to the last one in July, but they.
I went on the wrong Saturday.
It's the second one in the month. But they are planning something very big for September 11th, happens to also fall on the second Saturday of the month, so they've got a big program, and I've talked to Deb, and she's going to have that running so the public can see, and then they've got some other things that are going throughout the month. So, taking August off, but they're planning a big day on September the 11th.
I think the Interfaith Community Outreach is planning their event that day as well.
I thought it was the 18th.
Maybe it is the 18th. I'm wrong.
It's September. I don't know.
Disregard that. Mr. Nelmes, you have anything?
Yes, I'd just like to advise the, the citizens in the Grandy area that had talked to me, it was three of them that talked to me about the golf car ordinance, and about using golf cars on the 35 mile an hour speed limit area between the intersection of Papa Branch Road 158 and the Papa Branch Baptist Church, where the speed limit goes back up to 45. And I talked with the county attorney, and he confirmed that when the board passed this ordinance, this was an ordinance for using golf cars in subdivisions. It came at the request, as best I can remember, of the citizens of Bell's Island, and we included any other subdivision that wanted to be included, and the idea was that you could use your golf car to travel to visit your neighbors, or to, to, to stay within the subdivision. And the, in researching that, I did tell one individual, I wasn't exactly sure, which was the truth, the, about that one section of Papa Branch, but, well, we did exclude that, and it was 158, 168 Papa Branch Road are not permissible avenues to travel. And in fact, giving it second thought, it actually is, is becoming increasingly dangerous to be on Papa Branch Road because of the increased traffic.
In a car.
In a car, yeah, at the, uh, and the state, by the way, just put up some super-duper cameras there for the last three or four days. And, and so that is the ordinance, that you can use the, the vehicles in the subdivisions that were approved, but not on Papa Branch Road, US 158, one, US 168. So if I misled anybody into thinking any different, I, I just wanted to make that clear. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Rohr?
Been a quiet week.
They're good ones, aren't they?
They are.
Mr. Gregory?
Mr. Chairman, I, I want to commend our county attorney tonight for staying on the folks up in Raleigh, and getting the North River opened again for the fishermen.
Oh, yeah.
That was opened up Sunday, and they're so appreciative of it, unbelievable. They're really appreciative of getting that North River back open, and I, I don't think I missed a week calling him, and I know he was on them every week trying to get that accomplished, and I, we appreciate it.
You're welcome. I want to, as I told you in my email to you, that Dr. Lewis Daniel, who's the director of Marine Fisheries, has probably been the most responsive head of a state agency I've ever dealt with. He, he got to expect and encourage my call every week, and he told me that my call helped him put pressure on his lawyers at the Attorney General's Office. He called me as soon as he was able to issue the proclamation last Friday to let us know that the North River was reopened. So a, a lot of credit also goes to, to Dr. Daniel for, for his interest in, in the issue.
You certainly need to send him a letter telling him that he is absolutely an exception to what a lot of the agencies are that we deal with, because.
I'm going to prepare that for your.
Send, send him appreciation letter, yes, sir. Send him a letter.
Copy, Senator Bassnight, Representative.
Yes, and the governor. Anything else, Mr. Gregory?
No, sir.
Mr. Etheridge?
Two things. Recently, the Corolla Ocean Rescue was involved in a competition up in Virginia Beach with ocean rescues from all up and down the coast, and they won their division hands down. So.
Good.
We, uh, debt a gratitude to what they're trying to do to help improve safety on the outer banks. And also recently, noted that Currituck is one of the two school systems in the northeast that met AYP for 2009 and 10, I think. That speaks highly of the educational system that we have here in Currituck County, and just congratulate the school board and the administration, and the students who did it.
And the parents who made sure they did it. Mr. Ily.
Yes, without objection from any of the board members, I am going to ask Mr. Scanlon to address some signage issues, I think would may help us some with some of our ordinance issues, especially in the Corolla areas where the crossovers are. I mean, there's a lot of people who are not aware of the, leaving the articles on the beach overnight type stuff. It was, that was adopted middle season, so the real estate, real estate companies have not had the opportunity to update their, their materials as they give it out to the people that are renting houses. And I, I think we could also put something on there that addressed where the trash receptacles are, may help with the trash some, and put them at, on the ocean side of the crosswalk, so people, when they're leaving the beach, see that if they've left their tents down there, and it's not, and other, they see this, hopefully it would help some. So without objection from anyone, I would ask him to do that.
Do you have any problem getting that accomplished, Mr. Scanlon?
Yes, sir.
Anything else? Last thing, I just would just ask everybody, please be careful out there, the traffic this year, I mean, it's just like old times again. I went to the beach Saturday morning, um, early, and on the way home, I mean, the traffic was literally bumper to bumper, moving well below the speed limit, from the Dare County Wright Memorial Bridge, when you get to that first stoplight, all the way through Coin Jock. I mean, I'm, there was places where it'd break a little bit, but it was literally bumper to bumper, well below the speed limit, and some places just barely moved all the way down. I have not seen it like that. Now, so far as the beach having a good year, that's a good thing, but if you're on this side of the water, make sure you plan your Saturdays very carefully, and watch out for the other guy, because they're not looking out for you, they're looking out for that bucket of sand. So, yes, sir.
Just one little tidbit of information. I, I was talking to Michael Cherry, you know, he works at the Currituck Club, and he said they are exceeding records this year that.
All of them are.
That they have never had before. I mean, just, and they'll set a record, and then the next week, they'll break the record. He said, so it has been a wonderful year for them.
I had one more comment, if you don't mind.
Yes, ma'am.
Since you said that, our schools start August 25th. We have traffic down here through Labor Day and beyond. Is there any way that we can ask for a sign be put up at the state line, and also coming in where 160, uh, 158 meets 168, to let them know that our children are in school to drive carefully?
Need those flashing.
Yeah, DOT will do that.
Those DOT signs that says, "School's in."
Well, we need two of them.
Yeah, that's a great idea.
I want it to welcome sign, if you can flash up another welcome sign.
Yeah. All right, we need a motion to go into closed session. Oh, county managers' report.
Nothing tonight.
Okay, that's what I thought. Have a motion, have a second? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed?